Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Monday, November 25, 2024. We're here for a rescheduled work session that we canceled from last Thursday. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? John, would you like to lead us in the pledge today?
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Okay. Before we get started with our topics here, I just want to have Greg Bergman come on up and he has something he would like to speak to us about and make an announcement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. So this is just really sort of a public service announcement. We want to get the word out there and increase transparency and visibility. The planning board is reviewing a development project out in Calverton. It's called TJOC Calverton. You may see the name Calverton-Hamlet Center floating around. It is a two-part application that the board's reviewing and involves a major subdivision and a site plan seeking to redevelop. It's approximately a 16-acre site in between Maloski's poultry farm and J and R Steakhouse, north side of Middle Country Road, about 600 feet west of Fresh Pond Avenue. The planning board issued a positive declaration on the project requiring the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement. The planning board is in receipt of what is called the draft scope for that project, and that sets the parameters on what the draft environmental impact statement is going to study. Just because the project site is located in proximity to an environmental justice area, we're just trying to sort of engage in enhanced public participation. Ultimately, it's public participation that will yield the best project. So the applicable documents, the draft scope, the site plan, subdivision plan, and all relevant documents are available on the town's website. They've been posted in two places since Friday, November 8. They were posted on the main Town of Riverhead website. On the bottom of the page, there's a little tab called Quick Links. You'll see a link there for TJOC Calverton, and those documents are also available on the planning department's webpage. So it's really just a public service announcement. The planning board will be holding a public hearing on that scoping session, on those scoping documents. That meeting is next Thursday, December 5 at 6:00 p.m. So I'm just trying to get the word out there. You know, we want to see good public involvement on this. The purpose of it is, again, to comment on the draft scope. So it's not per se, we don't want this project, we don't like it. It's to really hone in that scope and determine what's going to be studied in connection with the environmental review of that project.
This project is an as-of-right use, correct?
Completely as-of-right. No variances, no, you know, no relief being sought, completely as-of-right.
What is the project for?
So the, it's about a 16-acre parcel. It's going to result, they're proposing a major subdivision, which will result in seven new single-family residential building lots. There is a zoning, which is called Hamlet Center zoning, which is on the road-fronting portion of the property, about 500 feet deep. That commercial lot is going to be about 200,000 square feet, and they're proposing a mixed-use development on that property consisting of about 30,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space and 36 one-bedroom apartments on the upper floors. No tenants as of yet, really spec development, but the Hamlet Center zoning district does allow a pretty wide range of uses. So it'll be a nice little Hamlet Center development out there.
You're always good at like informing us towards what the impact is on the school. Will that be part of the report for public? What would be your perception of how many kids this puts in the school?
So I mean, that's something we can look at. You know, we've had that question come up on other apartment developments. It is difficult to speculate. I mean, we have seen, I did have some data when we were reviewing the 203-213 East Main Street. I did foil the school district a couple of years ago about the downtown apartment developments. It's not necessarily a secret issue per chance, but it is something, again, something that if it comes up and the board, the planning board deems it appropriate, it's something that can be included in the EIS.
One-bedroom apartments generally don't produce children, so.
Correct.
And their market rate, they're not, there's no affordability component to those.
Sometimes people are just simply hearing that. That seems to be our number-one concern, is the impacts of the school always.
Okay, cool. So that's it, just a public service announcement?
And this is all part of what we're going to be doing now, and these are going to be posted on the website as they come in, the availability. They get put up so the public has another means of knowing what's going on. So hopefully, we don't hear, I didn't know about this, when did this happen? That type of thing, we get it out to the public right away, and then there's, you know, hopefully that will help matters.
Correct. I did share the scope with the Greater Calverton Civic Association, knowing that they would be interested. And again, members of the planning department are always available for a phone call. If you go to the town website, our extensions are listed on there, our email addresses. I welcome anybody to call and ask questions about the process, what the next steps are, et cetera, what level of involvement they can have in. So I would look forward to any of those calls coming in.
Good.
Thank you.
Excellent, appreciate that. Very good. Okay, our first topic up for open session is police matters surrounding the monthly report, July and August, with cheap frost. October, oh yeah. That generates every time, the same two months. Sorry about that.
Okay. As you can see, our criminal incidents are 209. It's a little up from 2023, but it's a different reporting system, obviously. Page three and four are the real nuts and bolts of it. Like I said, we're, as you can see on the bottom of, on page four, the numbers are kind of consistent across, you know, the four months now. It's just a lot better look for this system and how everything's getting reported. Obviously, one of our hires is shoplifting. There's a lot of, you know, from stores, 65 in October.
That's only going to go up with the holiday season coming.
Correct.
Right, and the fact that nobody gets help.
Sadly, yes, correct. I know you guys.
Bob, what's your question?
Me?
One of the double.
When is Albany going to take the handcuffs off the police so we can get the crime down? That's my question.
Deer strikes, deer strikes.
Also the judicial system in New York State, which is, you know, it's not, like I said, not our local police office or our local town justice. It's a requirement that the state put down, so. You got to get your state legislators.
Yep. It's not allowed the judges to.
Correct. The judges don't have the option.
Except by four, Bob.
Four? Not double.
Well, it's because of, they're in the right place reporting, so.
Yep, next month will be even higher.
We did have two non-fatal overdoses, two females, 35 and 34, eight years of age.
Arcane used on both?
Yes. Like I said, I think we're just clicking along. It's pretty much what I have. Obviously, Black Friday is this coming Friday. Expect a lot of traffic up on the 58 area. If you don't need to go in that area, I probably wouldn't, I would suggest not to.
And a lot of the big box stores are not opening on Thanksgiving Day.
Correct.
Is Tanger open? They're not either, that's good, okay. I know they stopped that a lot during COVID and didn't go back to it, so.
Actually, Thanksgiving, I have to check on, to be honest with you, I have to look at that.
At Tanger?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know it opens at 6:00, it's not overnight anymore, which is, which is a lot better. There's also, it was posted in the media release, so the public knows there's going to be road construction on West Main from Forge Road to Mill. It's starting very shortly and anticipating into the spring. So, you know, it could be subject to closures here and there, but the roads will reopen, you know, daily, so.
Chief, I just have a question. On the new reporting system, it doesn't distinguish between domestic assaults and regular assaults at all?
Nope. That's. It's the way it is, yeah.
The criminal justice system puts it that way?
This is from straight from, you know, we report to DCJS, and that's, you know, obviously, we would have, so when we get a new category, it would populate. So like, we haven't seen every crime yet that the system has, but obviously, we've seen domestic, you know, we've arrested people for domestic assaults and harassment. So this is how it shows up.
Just that on the revenue chart, that there is a line for interlock device? And you had no revenue from that? Is that something that is outsourced, or is that something that the town would be able to provide to be able to generate money?
No, that's for, if someone gets mandated to have an interlock device and it does get outsourced.
It does get outsourced.
Yeah, the company installs it, they have to. The person comes in, we hold like a, we hold like the check for the, once it's ordered to get into the car, and then it, the company gets, you know, installs it. We don't, we don't, we don't charge anybody. It's part of the county.
Chief, can I just one question further on this? The, where it says simple assaults, is that what covers harassments and strangulations now? I don't know what that would fall under, aggravated assaults or simple assaults? I don't know any other category they'd fall under.
I'd have to take a better look into it, but I'm going to say that's going to fall into simple assault.
Okay.
I'll get back to you, so you want to know?
Where are those crimes? Again, typically, domestic violence cases, harassments and strangulation cases. Under this new rubric, where does that fall?
Just because we always talk about deer strikes, I have to commend the highway department. Like, last Monday, I was out and picked up a truck out there, and the whole truck was loaded with deer. And like, they're phenomenal about getting out there, first thing, early Monday morning, and collection over the weekend. It's a lot of work, and there seems to be probably a lot more deer strikes that are taking place that are actually reported to the police and so forth. And they do a phenomenal job towards keeping our highways clean and safe, and that's a tough job to do. So I commend them as well as all the work, of course, the police department's doing.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I wanted to say one positive thing here, aside from just grilling.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for attending the Guatemala Gala. The police department was there, and it was very nicely attended by all members of the police department, Riverhead as well. Thank you.
Okay, the second item we have up is code enforcement, matters surrounding the monthly report. Rich Downs.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right. Everybody got their handouts?
Yep.
All right. Code enforcement, we opened up 70 new complaint investigations for the month of October. Some of those include dangerous conditions. We had three overcrowded houses, 13 property maintenance code violations, nine no rental permits. We had a big month for residential no building permits. We had eight. We had two transient rentals and one unsecured building. We have approximately 155 cases still under investigation since January 1st. I'm not too worried about that number because you have to think that we split that between five officers, so.
And those are also cases that could be in court. They're still open.
Right.
So that process takes a while in and of itself.
Right, and still under investigation. So, you know, it averages out to about 30 per officer. When you look at it that way, you know, if that number gets up to over 250 or something, then I'm a little concerned. The tickets, summonses, we issued 63 summonses, 27 notice of violations, and sometimes those notice of violations will turn into additional summonses for noncompliance. Those, I bullpointed some of the infractions. For summonses, we had no rental permits, no building permits, no COs, a typical occupancy, parking on the front yard area, commercial litter, residential litter, land clearing without permits, importation of materials, weeds, some site plan violations, those are those commercial properties that have either altered their site plan or are not keeping up with the site conditions. Unsafe buildings, dangerous hazardous conditions, overcrowding. We had a slower shopping cart, tickets that we issued. We had sent out a bunch of notice of violations to commercial properties who aren't in compliance with the wheel locking systems on their shopping carts, and we started issuing some summonses to those businesses that haven't complied with the wheel locking systems. Accessory buildings and structures, setback violations, and we had some property maintenance code violations in New York State and zoning. All right, moving on to rentals. We had approximately, we inspected approximately 120 residential houses and 100 apartment units. Fees and rentals, we collected $35,850 for the month of October, and our year-to-date revenue in our department for rentals is $311, $325 in rental fees. Any questions?
Yes, I have one. Richie, on litter commercials, that illegal dumping?
Most of that time, it's a failure to maintain your commercial properties with just litter, like paper, bottles, cans, things of that nature. So I think the fines are higher for the commercial properties than they are the residential.
What's the fine for no building permit on a residential building project?
I believe the minimum fine is $500. And that can go up to 1,000. And in second offense, of course, it increases from 1,000 to 1,500, and third offense is 1,500 to 20, 500.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Next up, we have town clerk, matters surrounding the monthly report with Jim Wooton. How are you?
Good. Of course, the one that inundates us the most are, of course, the foil requests. They come in daily and get rerouted by us. That's up to 243 so far for October, and it's a little higher this month so far. Other than that, it's pretty self-evident what we do there with the log licenses and the birth certificates. There are, now, on a good note, Monday, this coming Monday, our Spanish interpreter, part-timer, will be starting. So, and then I guess on the meeting on Tuesday, we'll ratify her appointment. So I'll bring her around and introduce her to everybody.
And what schedule will she be working, Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
I have her five days a week, 11 to 2:30.
Okay.
I wanted somebody every day.
Every day.
Because it's, I don't like sending everybody from the car.
Right.
So we're trying to, we rearrange our wedding schedules so that they'll be between 11 and 12:00 for her. We try to schedule wedding appointments, and it's, so we're trying to work around that schedule, so. So that's going to be a real lifesaver for our department. Also, I am working with Victoria Saru on the, what we'd like to see as far as fees for next year. Minor things, animal control, prices, taxi cab. It's all through local law, so it all has to be done through public hearing. So we're creating that now, and we should be able, I hopefully have that for the next meeting as far as the post to the public hearing on that, and that instituted by the first of the year. So Bob's been great working with me on that. And other than that.
Any questions? Can we post that somewhere in Spanish, the hours? Like, we.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Outside door, it just says people come and they can arrive.
Yep, yep, yep.
They don't speak English, they can at least they'll know when to return and the correct hours.
I think it's, you're right, we'll do just that. Some know a little bit of English, just enough that we can, a lot of times we'll text back and forth and use, but, you know, then again, it's generic. So sometimes, I didn't realize that in the Spanish language, there's so many different dialects sometimes. Somebody from Ecuador can't understand, or somebody from Guatemala say it's weird. It's just, they got different dialects, different words, I think, so.
Yep.
But yeah, we'll definitely post that, that's a good idea. And that's it.
Anybody else?
I wish there was more, more to report.
No, that's fine.
But we stay nice and steady in there, and so. And you guys really gave me my workout with those 18, 18 publishing posts and all that, so we just got done with that.
Aren't you glad it's behind you, though? Aren't you glad it's behind you?
Well, I tell you, it's, because you remember, every, it's got to be posted 18 times, and put in the paper 18 times, but it's good, it's good. Keeps me busy after Tom's meeting.
There's a lot more coming, so.
Oh, I know, and it's good, and they did a great job at that.
Yeah, they did.
Very proud of the way they handled that, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We'll see.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
You too, Jim, thank you. Next up, we have Justice Court matters surrounding the monthly report with Counselor Saru.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Good. So it's very, very busy in the month of October, as you can see. I think we have, I've collected the most fines this month than any other month. We had a lot of dispositions. I separated them out into counts. Had a lot of jail sentences, a couple trials. So that grand total, that's obviously everything, including surcharges. We were up to 40,980 last month, which is, yeah.
That's.
Anything with an asterisk, as you know, are default judgments. And these are just, you know, numbers that we're hoping that when people pay what they're supposed to pay, that is what would have been collected. So pretty straightforward, just, we only had one parking date because of the holiday, so that's why that's a little bit lower than usual. But everything else, we're trying to crank these out, because as you know, there's many code enforcement officers, many fire marshals, PD, one of me. So I'm trying to move everything along as best I can. So that's, that's pretty much all I have. I don't have anything in particular. But any questions you have that you might want me to report back on on the next one, I'm happy to.
Excellent. Keep the numbers coming.
Yeah.
These are good, these are good.
I would just say, after conclusion of the year, so maybe in January, you know, if we can get a report on all the mandatory surcharges in the proper category.
Sure.
And then we can kind of, just so our financial administrator would know, and then if there's any particular project, like a picnic table in the park, as simple as that, like knowing if and what additional funds may be available in the appropriate department.
Yeah, so this chart that you're all looking at now is the full picture of the court, but every month I send to accounting just the surcharges in an Excel spreadsheet.
Excellent.
So it'll compile, and I have a tab for each month. So hopefully, by January, it'll already be done on my end.
So that's perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you for, you know, keeping such good track of everything, so.
No problem.
It's just like the little things, not an absorbent amount of money, but, like I say, picnic table here, there, different placements and so forth, repairs.
Yeah, it certainly adds up, so long as people are paying them, we should be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, good to see everyone.
Thank you, good to hear. Okay, next up, we have matters surrounding possible change in showmobile rental fees, and that will be with Kern, Woski, Testa, and Clifford.
So they're en route, they got delayed on another meeting, maybe you want to jump to your last item and then we go back to showmobile?
Okay, mine's going to be quick. We're going to skip over and hobble off on that for a little bit. Item six is matters surrounding update on CCDT committee. That's with me. We had on November 13th, we had a meeting with the committee that I have on EPCAL, and we talked basically about environmental regeneration and environmental issues that could possibly be something up at EPCAL. And we looked at other things that are going on around the country, how different recycling programs, Bob. This was a recycling to an upcycle program, which you've talked about before. They have in other parts of the country, I'm not saying this is coming to EPCAL, but these are just sort of the things we're looking at, is they're taking construction debris, and they're setting up shops where they're pulling the nails out and everything else, and reusing the lumber, reusing the two-by-fours, the two-by-eights, whatever, anything that they can repurpose and reuse, and then they open up kind of as a used lumberyard, if you would, to sell the materials back to the public at a deeply discounted rate because it was just going into the trash. And the amount of waste that this is saving from going into the waste systems is tremendous. And it's, you know, saving trees in the forest, because you're not cutting down new trees to make new wood when you can repurpose some of the old wood. And obviously, not all of it can be used. I mean, if you're framing out a wall, you need an eight-foot stud, and if it's been cut down already, it's not going to be any good for that, but if it could use for cross supports or many other ways, it's still going to be used. So these were just things that have been done around the country, different ideas. We talked about, Mark Hobner had, talked about food scrap program, and talking about the, we're paying roughly $100 a ton for tipping fees, and how we could possibly save up to $15,000 a month by removing the food scraps out of our waste stream and increasing our food scrap program. So there's different things that they're looking at all the time, and they come in and we meet and they present them, and in the meantime, we're just, we're thinking about ideas for EPCAL. We're thinking about, obviously, the litigation. There was a little bit of movement there. So we want to be ready when the litigation is eventually lifted, won, lost, decided, whatever it may be, and we just want to have a better idea of what we can look to do up there. And obviously, anybody that comes in, we would push towards the town board to vet and interview and everything else. So that's where we're at there with our last meeting. And our next meeting, I believe, isn't until the end of January, like January 29, I want to say.
I like the word upcycle.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting to hear the report on it. You know, I mean, that's not something, when you talk about EPCAL, we're looking about creating economic, an economic generator with jobs that can pay people to live on the island. That necessarily, that isn't necessarily one of them, but it is an idea, and maybe an acre or two or three could be used for something like that, who knows? But that's what's going on around the country, so we're just being informed of these things that are happening. Okay, having seen, any other questions? Okay. Having seen Ken Testa and Shannon Clifford here, come on up, and we'll go back to matters surrounding the possible change in the showmobile rental fees.
We hardly ever get to see you, Shannon. How are you?
Good afternoon.
Felt like morning was just a few minutes ago.
You guys went through those last ones really quick. Oh, definitely.
Yeah, I think we all had this.
So I just, I think we had come a couple of years ago to discuss some of these fees of what the showmobile costs us, so I just kind of updated it. There really was no change to any of the surrounding towns or the county. They're still charging the same things as they were back in 2011, I'm sorry, 21. And our fee, our cost just went up a small amount based on, you know, pay increases. So my estimate was, you know, an estimate of a general six-hour event is costing the town just under $1,300. And right now, we're charging $100 a day.
$1,300 for the cost to the town?
Yes, for a six-hour event.
That's labor?
That's labor, that's municipal garage bringing the. That's labor, that's municipal garage bringing the unit there, that covers it all.
Yeah, municipal garage toes it there, toes it back, and we staff it for safety reasons, because it's a hydraulic door, there's a lot of, you know, safety concerns there, so we leave somebody on site to make sure it doesn't get vandalized and that it's operated safely.
And I think we noticed that we kind of waived the fee for almost everything, you know, you feel bad.
Yeah, we're only giving it out to not-for-profits, so everybody's there just trying to generally raise money for whatever organization, so we have them raising it for some and not for other, waiving it for some and not others, but we are losing quite a bit, so. We just had done some suggestions to keep in line with other towns in the county, you know, if you wanted to consider raising it for next year.
Southampton charges four fifty for four hours, fifty dollars for a different hour, a hundred and fifty staffing per hour.
I just feel like we're missing out on a lot of revenue that could be coming into the town.
We are, but so many of these are not-for-profits, and if you were to hit them with a thirteen hundred dollar cost for the showmobile, I'm sure they wouldn't use it, and it wouldn't be doable for a lot of them. I think what we need to do is we need to sit down and put a fee schedule together for not-for-profits versus public use or private use.
There really isn't any public use, it's, it's all not-for-profit.
It almost all is, yeah.
Yeah, we're not sending it out for, you know, somebody just wants to have it at their house, or, you know, business, we're not, it's only not-for-profits that we're sending it.
So they're going up on all the racing events and the town and downtown, just, anytime we want it, it's usually, it's, it's one nonprofit competing against another nonprofit, that's when, you know, when they get multiple events at the same day and time, and that's, that's happened a few times in this past year, and everybody, you know, rushes and puts their water in, you know, soon as possible for the following year, because it's, it's a, you know, because we don't charge, you know, but we're trying to help the nonprofits, give them the ability to raise some money, but anytime we do send it out, it basically where, where, what you're saying is we're, we're donating the first thirteen hundred dollars to every nonprofit event that takes place, essentially, right?
Yeah, basically, you know, we're not coming close to even breaking even.
And a lot of these events are happening on the weekends, which is creating overtime or at night, thirteen hundred at a loss for the town, I think, is a, is a low number.
I think it's unfortunate, but I think we are going to, certainly has to up the rate, without a doubt, and again, I know most of them are not-for-profits, but it's also not fair to shift this burden onto the taxpayers.
Correct.
For each one of these events that comes up, so I think we are definitely going to have to increase these quite a bit from a hundred dollars per day. That won't affect anything that's already booked for this year, but hopefully for two thousand and twenty-five, maybe we can put together a fee schedule that we all agree on and get that codified.
Because often, you know, the not-for-profits could get, find a sponsor, you know, because I totally agree, it's not fair to the rest of the taxpayers to be supplementing this, but there was another fee schedule I had, which was, it's not on here, but how much they charge, so some towns will rent it out to other, you know, other towns that don't have them, right?
Yeah.
Have you ever been asked to rent it out to another town?
A lot of policies turn to leave, not to leave the town.
Yeah.
There was a time, years and years and years ago, where it went out, I don't think, one of them, was it Southampton, maybe, didn't have one at some point, but.
Yeah, I know that.
Now you're talking about longer distances and, you know.
Sheriff's Road.
Yeah, I think the sheriff's office had asked us to send it to Yapank, but I think the town, I think it was the attorney's office had said they, because we're self-insured, and to send it out of town could be a problem.
Because then we have to consider wear and tear on it, too.
Right.
It does have a lot, I think, that thing's got to be coming up on twenty-five, I remember buying that, specking it out, yeah, that was, got to be twenty-five years ago. Does it have any resale value? I'm just curious.
I'm sure it does.
It's in pretty good shape.
I was going to ask.
It is, the guys really take good care, yeah, the guys take good care of it, yeah, absolutely.
I know the county rents it out, because legislative cara capra and myself paid to have the county showmobile come for the Brink's five K run, just because ours was being used for the Mozart festival, I can't say that right.
Oh, Mosaic.
Mosaic, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for East End Arts.
And so the county does rent it out, but still, there's an expense to that, the county doesn't provide.
Oh, yeah, that's on the.
It's on here, it's five forty, five forty for four hours. So their, their fees are about what, you know, what we're seeing as our expenses being, so it's kind of in line with the county.
But that's, the only thing that I think we have to have consideration for is that, you know, if it's just one town event, but when you have two nonprofit events having the same day, and one gets it free from the town of Riverhead, and then the other one is forced to go out and purchase it from Suffolk County, well, Brookhaven Town has what there's here, you know, that's when it gets, it's muddy water, because one's saying, well, that one just asked maybe a few days before us, and why do we got to pay, and they don't have to pay, and it's almost like on circumstances like that, even if we're going to give it out and there are, there are two requests for the same day, they almost both should have to pay half the cost of whatever the second trailer is, if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
I mean, because there are some that just say, well, we do it on the same day every year, year after year, but that still doesn't help any new coming events that also want to do things, like Memorial Day weekend is a popular weekend, and so we, that's kind of the thing, I think, that when, if you're going to adjust the rates, you've got to adjust how it applies and to who it applies to, where, as opposed to just saying no, if you say, we do have two requests the same day, and therefore, second trailer, that we can help make arrangements with county or something, but then both entities have to split that, that cost. It's not fair to say, you get it for free, and you have to pay full tilt.
You have to go get it from county now.
And that's running to the Polish fair as well, right?
Some of the businesses are supplying showmobiles to everybody either, they have one.
Right, right.
You know, it's, it's not our job to have thirty of them in stock and provide everybody with a showmobile, so.
But then, but then if you give.
To me, it's first come, first served. My mother used to cook three chickens and put them on the table, and if you were late getting to the table, and there was nothing but bones left, guess what? You were late to the game.
But that didn't happen in the past years, because other entities called and booked it.
Right.
Prior to one, and then they were told at a later date.
Yeah, like I think the Mosaic Festival already has their event application in for next year, so they'll please send it.
They jump around, yeah.
So they're planning way ahead, yeah.
Another thing to keep in mind is maybe, maybe do some kind of a discount for town-sponsored events, like, you know, we have the Mosaic or something, that's the Halloween festivities downtown, Santa Claus, maybe if there's a town-sponsored function, you give them a little discount, because it is for the residents of the town, as opposed to a fundraiser for Kent or wherever else, just something to think about.
I agree, because I was thinking about that as well, how.
Yeah, you know, it's coming out of the bid, it's silly to have the bid paying in there, taxing the people downtown, it's kind of going full circle, just a thought. That's a good one, it's a benefit to, to the town, number one, and, you know, like the Halloween festival or the Christmas, that also brings business, you know, business to the businesses, so.
Maybe have a different rate structure, yeah, just a thought.
Something to.
Yeah, it's good to have the discussion about it, we appreciate you guys coming down.
No problem.
Sorry you had to drive a long way.
We're sorry, we're late.
We're in Hell Avenue.
Did you make it there, Ken?
Probably tracked mugging here, actually.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Did you make it there?
Yes, 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 we're in good shape.
Good.
The neighbors came out, we gave them permission, that's just a problem.
Perfect, thank you so much.
So I think we'll get that resolved.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there waiting for D E C?
Yeah, we met with Land Use today, they're going to help us map them, the tricky part is mapping them, they'll walk it through, if it take us six months, they'll walk it through. It'll be a little charged, but.
Good.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, that takes everything we have for open session, we're going to move on to resolutions. Devin, if you would mind coming up and read off the resolutions. Good afternoon, everyone.
Oh, afternoon, right. Creature of habit. If we're ready to go?
Yes.
Resolution number one, authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for highway department grinding of town yard waste on, on-site at South Side Young's Avenue Yard Waste Facility. Resolution number two, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for janitorial and kitchen supplies. Resolution number three, approve special event chapter two fifty-five application for Andrews Top Gun Run twenty twenty-five. Number four, Water District Capital Project number eight-two-four-two-four budget adoption. Number five, budget adjustment for settlement with State Farm Insurance Company. Number six, approve special event chapter two fifty-five application for East End Arts Annual Mosaic Festival, just talking about it. Resolution number seven, authorizes finance to establish budget for twenty twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Final Contract. Number eight, ratifies the appointment of two water treatment plant operator two Bs. Resolution number nine, extends agreement with PKF O'Connor Davies LLP for audit services for town of Riverhead, including Justice Court. This resolution references an attached letter of engagement, that letter will be forthcoming. Resolution number ten, authorizes the removal of fixed assets. Resolution number eleven, adopts a local law amending chapter two sixty-three of the Riverhead Town Code entitled penalties for offenses. Resolution number twelve, adopts a local law amending chapter two seventeen of the Riverhead Town Code entitled penalties for offenses. Number thirteen, ratifies and accepts the resignation of a crossing guard, and I'm told it was just an administrative error, hence the delay, this person submitted their letter resignation on August tenth, and we're only now getting the resolution in, so that was an inadvertent oversight.
We desperately need crossing guards, so.
Yes, I'm told we have a couple in the pipeline, but.
If there's anybody out there that's retired and looks to do something in the morning and the afternoon, please come forward.
Yep.
And we can put a pay increase into the two thousand and twenty-five budget to increase their pay to entice more people to come out for them.
Resolution number fourteen, ratifies the appointment of a temporary part-time office Resolution number fifteen, ratifies the appointment of a part-time bilingual clerk. Resolution sixteen, extends bid for well and pump service for Riverhead Water District. Number seventeen, ratifies authorization for the supervisor to execute a stipulation with an employee. Number eighteen, authorizes the chief of police to execute an affiliation agreement with Kuka College.
That's for an externship program with a, a student at that college would come down and do an externship with the, with the police department, it's usually a student that's in a criminal justice program, and we take them in and give them some work to do, and ride-alongs and stuff like that.
Yep, good. Resolution number nineteen, accepts the retirement of a heavy equipment operator. Resolution twenty, assumes lead agency issues negative declaration and determines that the application entitled Elite Towers Wading River Fire District, situated at fifteen oh three North Country Road, Wading River, New York, is upon Monroe balancing test, exempt from the zoning and land use regulations of the town of Riverhead, to the extent that the applicant shall not be required to receive the necessary variances from the zoning board of appeals, a special permit from the town board, or formal site plan approval from the planning board, and we have planner Matt Charter's with us, he can delve into this if you guys have any specific questions on that.
And this is basically what we discussed at the work session, and then we received further information on it from both sides, and now this is being put together for a resolution, so. Anybody have any thoughts or concerns or comments?
Okay, resolution twenty-one, ratifies the appointment of an automotive equipment operator.
Thank you, Matt.
Resolution twenty-two, authorizes the Community Development Department to apply for funding through New York State DJS. Number twenty-three, authorizes the town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for two oh three dash two thirteen East Main Street Sewer Design Contract S Sewers. Number twenty-four, extends bid for general hardware items. Number twenty-five, accepts the resignation of a cook. Number twenty-six, rescinds town board resolution twenty twenty-four dash nine forty-four, this is regarding the appointment of Brian Mills, there were some errors, I guess, in the prior resolution, so we're going to rescind and then simply replace it with the next resolution, which reappoints Brian Mills to Board of Assessment Review. Number twenty-eight, waves fee for use of showmobile for tree lighting at Town Square.
There we go.
Number twenty-nine, authorizes shotgun hunting for deer on town property at Enterprise Park at Calverton, Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred dash one thirty-five dash one dash seven point three, three and others, and seventeen fifty-one Sound Avenue, Calverton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map number six hundred dash sixty dash one dash two, from January five, twenty twenty-five, to January thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, sunrise to sunset.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we shut down the walking trail and the bike trail during shotgun season up at EPCAL, so from January fifth to January thirty-first, I believe, yes.
Yep.
The fifth to the thirty-first, the trail will be closed, so people know it will be posted up there.
Resolution number thirty, establishes time of regular meetings of the town board twenty twenty-five, so if you see this resolution, there's a, the meeting schedule is attached, and there was some question about the first, whereas in this resolution, it says, the first meeting to be held, the first Tuesday at January two P M., the second held on the fourth Wednesday, just, if you look at the calendar, that's actually the way the dates fall in January, so that's actually correct, so the fourth Wednesday, because Monday, MLK Day is on January twentieth, so that week, the meeting is a Wednesday, so that reads correctly, I think we were questioning that earlier, so that checks out, so obviously, if there's anything else that we have questions on, we can certainly flush that out, but we had a couple different sets of eyes look at it, so hopefully we got it right, we'll see. And then the next resolution thirty-one establishes time of regular meetings of the Community Development Agency twenty twenty-five, of course, that was always fall in the second meeting of the month during the evening meetings. Number thirty-two, appoints a code enforcement officer, Connor's been provisional to this Resolution number thirty-three, authorizes the supervisor to sign agreement with Townscape for tree lighting at Town Square twenty twenty-four. Number thirty-four, authorizes supervisor to sign agreement with Chamber of Commerce for bonfire twenty twenty-four.
And this year, just so the public knows, everything is going to be on December seventh, the bonfire, the Lions Parade, and the tree lighting, and Santa, all will be on December seventh.
Right.
In prior years, they were done weekends apart, but everybody got together and decided it was, and it makes more sense, everybody's busy during the holidays, now it's just one time, you want to bring the kids down, and everything is there that day.
And the different groups have collaborated and put this all together, they've really been working hard, so it's going to be a great day for downtown.
Townscope bid, Chamber.
And the Lions.
And the Lions, have all worked together to put this together nicely, so we thank them and appreciate them.
And hot chocolate, plenty of chocolate.
Yep.
And the last resolution pays the bill.
Consolidating Christmas.
Yes, I was going to take it away altogether, Ken.
What about the twelve days of Christmas? There's eleven more days, don't worry.
Okay, that's it on our resolutions, in a moment, we're going to go into executive session to discuss items under personnel, be matters surrounding the hiring of an employee with Chief Frost, and under legal, we have matters involving an update on litigation between the town of Riverhead against Scott's Point with Howard and Hurley, and matters surrounding possible sale of real property, Thomas, Fredente, and Hurley. Just two quick notes, first of all, everybody out there have a, have a very happy Thanksgiving, and just a reminder, the town hall is closed Thursday and Friday, and will reopen on Monday, December second, so everybody, enjoy your turkey, or whatever it is you're going to cook, and have a great holiday, enjoy, rest up, plenty of good football on for all those football fans, so enjoy and have a great week, thank you.